That's right, that'll teach 'em.
Let's just get out of here.
The Muscatine City Council will come to order. Begin this evening with a roll call by Fran.
House Members Lorette.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Natfig.
Present.
Shahadi.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Spread.
Present.
I'll present, Your Honor.
Thank you Fran. Folks, would you please rise and join me in our pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome everyone. We begin tonight with a consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes items 6A, items 8A through K, items 9A and B, filing of communications which is 12A, and tonight's bills totaling $1,429,372.93?
So moved, Your Honor.
That would be Phil and a second.
Second.
Second. Tom, is that you? Okay. Any discussion, council? All those in favor say aye.
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 Close nay? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, dropping down to item seven. Public hearing. This public hearing concerns the proposed rezoning of property located at 3205 Cedar Street, Muscatine Power &amp; Water. Muscatine Power &amp; Water has submitted a request to rezone the 42-acre partial located at their facility from R3 Single Family Residential to C3 Planned Commercial. The purpose of the request is to bring the zoning of this partial in line with its current use. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommends the approval of this rezoning request. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak?
Move to close.
Motion to close by Osama.
Second, Trevor.
I'll give that to Scott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carries seven zero. That was item A, by the way. Item B. Section 2702 of the Housing and Economic Recovery Action of 2008 requires that a public hearing be conducted annually to discuss any changes to the goals, objectives, and policies of the Muscatine Municipal Housing Agency Plan. Now is the time for the public to comment. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to comment? Motion to close?
Move to close.
Tom?
Second.
Jeanette? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close nay? Motion carries seven zero. Dropping down to item 11 on your agenda from the city administrator. Presented for city council's consideration is the first reading of an ordinance rezoning property at 3205 Cedar Street over Muscatine Power &amp; Water. MP&amp;W has submitted a request to rezone a 42-acre partial located at their facility from R3 Single Family Residential to C3 Planned Commercial. The purpose of the request is to bring the zoning of this partial in line with its current use. Is there a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance as submitted?
So moved.
That would be Bob. And a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second. Scott? Any discussion, council? This is a roll call vote, beginning with Bob.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
And Jeanette.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item B. Presented for city council's consideration is the second reading of an ordinance designing or designating an area of Muscatine as the 2013 Muscatine Housing Urban Revitalization Area. Following a presentation to city council in September 2012, staff was authorized to begin developing a program to address and stimulate new and expanding residential development in designated areas, promote infill opportunities, and encourage historic preservation. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance as submitted?
So moved.
I'll give that to Scott. And a second, Mark? Any discussion, council? There's also a roll call vote, beginning with Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
And Osama.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item C. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on Amendment Number Two to the 2012-2013 city budget. This proposed amendment will increase total budgeted expenditures for the city by $370,700, with budgeted transfers to increase by $5,000 for a total expenditure change of $375,700. City budgeted revenues are proposed to be amended by $172,800, which includes $5,000 of funding transfers in. Amendments will be made to the General Fund, Enterprise Fund, and Special Revenue Fund. Prior to formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. This public hearing will be held on Thursday, May 16, 2013, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
That's Bob and a second?
Second.
Second. Jeanette? Any discussion, council? It's a roll call vote, beginning with Bob.
Aye.
Osama.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Phil.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
And Jeanette.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item D. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving a mortgage release for 115 Gilbert Street. The property owner participated in the 2006 CDVG Housing Rehabilitation Program, receiving the maximum $24,999 in funding assistance through a five-year forgivable loan. The property owner signed a mortgage agreement on January 7, 2008. The project was completed on April 18, 2008, and the entire $24,999 debt is now forgiven. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Tom?
Second, Your Honor.
Second. Osama? Discussion, council? It's a roll call vote, beginning with Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item E. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving a mortgage release for 102 Pond Street. The property owner participated in the 2006 CDVG Housing Rehabilitation Program, receiving the maximum $24,999 in funding assistance through a five-year forgivable loan. The property owner signed a mortgage agreement on October 24, 2007. The project was completed on May 2, 2008, and the entire $24,999 debt is now forgiven. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
That was Mark.
Second.
Second. Scott? Discussion, council? Roll call vote, beginning with Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item F. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving a mortgage release for the neighbor of 102 Pond Street. This one, 104 Pond Street. The property owner participated in the 2006 CDVG Housing Rehabilitation Program, receiving the maximum $24,999 in funding assistance through a five-year forgivable loan. The property owner signed a mortgage agreement on September 10, 2007. The project was completed on April 22, 2008, and the entire $24,999 debt is now forgiven. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
That would be Jeanette.
Second.
Second. Tom? Discussion, council? It's a roll call vote again, beginning with Jeanette.
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item G. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve Change Order Number 10 for the Water Pollution Control Improvements Project. The contractor, Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated, WBCI, inspected the new line that was run from the thickened waste activated sledge pumps to the digesters on the other side of the plant to determine if there was an obstruction in the line. No obstruction was found. Staff has proposed a payment of $3,000 for inspection of the line, which was accepted by the WBCI. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
That was Mark. And a second?
Second.
Second. Tom? Any discussion at all, council? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
The opposed nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item H. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution accepting completed work for the Water Pollution Control Plant Improvements Project and authorizing final payment. The city entered into an agreement for this project with Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated for $15,780,000. There were 10 change orders totaling $200,957 for a total contract amount of $15,980,957. All work under the contract has been completed by the contractor and accepted by the WPCP Director and Project Engineer. It is staff's recommendation that the city council accept the completed work and authorize final payment to the contractor. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
And a... That's Tom. And a second?
Second.
Second. I think, Mark, you beat Scott to the punch. Any discussion, council?
Yes, I would like to...
John had a couple comments.
John, you're gonna say you have some remarks?
I have something for you. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Evening.
Very happy to stand here before you and tell you that the project has finally been completed. Wrapped up things this week. A few little tweaks to our IT programs are being finished off, but everything is running properly. All the construction projects are done, and we are ready to move on with our lives. There is not an aspect of the plan, I don't think, that was not touched by this project. So it was a very technical, very, very difficult project to get through, but we made it. It's touched three directors now, starting with Don Freel, Roger Kirby, and now me. So it's spanned an awful lot of people. Especially, I'd like to give the biggest kudos to this from our staff, especially Bob Jones, who held this thing together like you would not believe during the times that we didn't know if we were gonna have things running or not during this project. We always managed to find a way to keep things going until we could get everything completed. So the biggest kudos go to my staff down at the plant to keep that running. The biggest things that we have, you know, reduction in three full-time positions due to this. Things that we did on our own, saving us, you know, $87,000 here, $25,000 here. I think we did a really good job of keeping things going and keeping it online. I'm talking with our engineer. We're at about 1.5 to 1.34% of our allotted contract in change orders, which an average may be about around 4 to 5%. So we are well under for change orders on this project as well. So I'm very happy with how we came out, and hopefully we can move on and get on with the next thing we need to do down at the plant. So take any questions? Anybody has at this time?
Osama, you...
Well, my question was, it would be a good idea here just to let the season of Muscatine to know how long this project lasted, when it started, when it ended. And so far here with the completion of this project, are we seeing the results that when we initiate the project, for example, the odor reduction of 95%, is that happening? Are you saying everything that was proposed, it's working?
We have seen a large reduction in odor control. We are still working on tweaking that a little bit. There seems to be something with the temperature control that we're going to be working on. Also, some things of the lift stations we found are gonna be more effective to actually help with that reduction. But yes, we have found a... A lot of the problem was with the actual structures that were at the plant, and those structures no longer exist. So we're not holding material in the same way. It's not sitting there just with this putrid odor just wafting off of it anymore. The odors that do come in are from the pipeline in the system itself. The 99-plus, 100 miles plus of collection systems that we have is where the odor is kinda coming in. We're trying to capture that gas. And any time you try to capture gas, you're gonna run into a few little quirks here and there. But we think we have a pretty good handle on what we're going to do with it going forward. So as far as treatment goes, we're definitely much happier with how we're treating the wastewater itself. There was very little control that we had over how we were actually biologically able to transform the polluted water to clean water going out. And we've actually seen a really good reduction in the things that we can do in that respect. Especially on the other end of the biosolids that we're putting out in the fields. That's gonna be a much nicer product. We're capturing that gas as well. So we're not off-gassing methane into the atmosphere. And going forward, we have a really good plan of actually using that methane gas as something useful that can power things around the plant and possibly out in the city as well.
Can you share the duration of this project? The construction of the project? As well as what is the lifespan expected after the completion?
I think the comprehensive plan for it was started around 2006. Real project work started around 2008. Construction went all the way through till about September 2011. And we've kinda been on a holding pattern since then to finish up mostly some of this IT work, the tech work, and the final pumps that we had. So the plant's really been running the way that it needs to be running since about September 2011. But the logistics of getting the pumps, the final effluent pumps put in, getting the control system to work with all of the other little things that are out there has taken until this point. So about five years, I would say, in construction. Give it seven with planning and everything. This is a 20-to-30-year improvement project, I would say. There are things that will need to be done along the way, obviously, as technology advances, as the EPA comes up with new mandates for us, new tricks up their sleeves, as it were. We see that coming already. We know that there's a permit application going in right now. And they are promising us within two years we need to have an engineering plan for nutrient reduction, be it biological or however we manage to do that. And then two years, we're gonna have to have construction. So this may not be the last time we come and asking for improvements, unfortunately. But as far as, you know, places for our fog that comes into town, for the fat soils and greases and high-strength waste that people are trying to get rid of all over the area, they're driving it as far away as Wisconsin and Des Moines. We'd rather keep that local, keep it here as a revenue source and as a source for energy to the plant and everything else.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Question for you now. I being a fourth ward and rub shoulders with people down in Kinsteine Park during the summer two or three times a week. Their magic question that I kept on telling them is that there was gonna be a massive reduction in the smell or you can't smell anything at all. And we kept on using that same analogy for the duration of the project. The summer, when we have kids on that ball field, are they gonna be able to smell any residue coming out of your pipes?
Well, like I say, we've been done with this for about two years, September 2011. And we did have, so last summer, you know, we went and asked, and we asked people, you know, who'd been at the ball field, and we said, "Did you smell specifically the plant?" There's lots of smells down at that end of town that they kinda have to weave their way around and identify what they're actually getting. But we did ask, and the first thing they said was, "Oh, you know, I didn't notice." Which is good to me. That's the first thing I like to hear, that they didn't notice. Because, believe me, I used to play ball down there, and I would notice every time. So hopefully, the biggest things that we had are gone from the plant now. So if you're even, if you're anywhere around the plant, you don't smell anything anymore. So I'm assuming if I'm in the plant, I can't smell it. That means people across the way in the ball fields are not going to either. Now, it is still a wastewater plant, and we have done as much as we can. Unfortunately, gases build, and they're gonna go places we don't always expect. And if the wind hits just right, 100% odor reduction. I'm not sure who promised that, but we try. We try to attain something close to that. But it's, I'm not sure you're ever going to get to 100% zero odor from a wastewater plant, unfortunately.
Thank you.
John, are the pumps all running now? Or is there still one, a line?
Pumps are in. They're purring like a kitten. They are running perfectly. And, you know, the number four pump, we put that in ourselves. And like I say, that saved us about $87,000 doing that. And again, kudos to my staff. I can't believe that they, you know, the technological knowledge they have of what to do and how to do that is really pretty amazing, that we have that kind of staff working for us on site. We didn't have to call anybody else in. They did it all. So...
One other kinda related question is, what's your approximate timetable on the laboratory project? I mean...
We'd love to have that done by the end of the year. I mean, it's a pretty simple building. It's just a building. And there's really nothing special about it except the air handling system. And that's the biggest problem that we're having with the old place, is that it's, you know, the fumes that build up in places like that are harmful to my staff. And we can't get 100% air removal from the area without spending pretty close to what a new building and a new system would cost. So that's why we're moving in that direction. And it's, but it looks, the plans are in place. We have drawings. We have everything ready to go. We're really close probably to going out to bid here, maybe within a month or so.
Anyone else, council? Okay, folks, this is a roll call vote, beginning with Tom.
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. On to item I. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution endorsing Muscatine Municipal Airport projects for fiscal year 2014 and certifying the availability of matching funds. The state of Iowa airport funding through the Iowa Department of Transportation requires cities to take action to officially endorse airport improvement projects and state they have local matching funds available to meet the 15% local share. This action does not commit the city financially to move forward at this time. City council must specifically approve each project grant agreement during... Yeah, project grant agreement during the respective fiscal year it is programmed. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
That's Osama?
Second, Trevor.
Second. Bob? Any discussion, council? There's also a roll call vote, beginning with Osama.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item J. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution accepting easements and property acquisitions for the West Hill Sewer Separation Project, Phase Two. This project is a continuation of the West Hill project, which that began in 2012, and is planned to continue for the next several years. In order to complete Phase Two, temporary and permanent easements and other property acquisitions from 11 property owners must be acquired by the city. Negotiations to complete the easements have been conducted or continue to be conducted with those property owners. Five of the properties are proposed to be acquired through delinquent property tax sales. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Scott? Five of the properties are proposed to be acquired through delinquent property tax sales. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Scott, and a second?
Second.
Second, Mark, any discussion, Council? It's a roll call vote, beginning with Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Osama?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item K, presented for City Council's consideration, is a resolution accepting easements and property acquisitions for the two thousand and thirteen Colorado Street Reconstruction Project. In order to begin the construction phase, temporary and permanent easements and other property acquisitions from twenty-one property owners must be acquired by the city. Negotiations to complete the easements have been conducted or continue to be conducted with those property owners. The Eastern Iowa Community College property and easements have been donated by the college. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Osama, and a second?
Second.
Second, Mark, any discussion, Council? Beginning with Osama, roll call vote. And Scott?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Item L, presented for City Council's consideration, is a request to approve an agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for an earmark-funded project, MRT, muster park to Wiggins Road Trail. This trail segment is a part of the National Mississippi River Trail System. It will be a combination of share the road and separate trail approximately seven-plus miles in length. The trail will provide a continuous route from LeWiza County to Wildcat Den. The estimated cost for the trail is nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. The city has received a federal earmark totaling four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty cents. In addition, a three hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred dollar state recreational trail grant has been awarded. The local match is eighty-one thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and forty cents. It is anticipated private donations will be sought to cover the match. The scheduled bid letting is March two thousand and fourteen, with construction to begin in May two thousand and fourteen. An agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for this earmark-funded project is necessary. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
I'll give that to Jeanette and Scott for a second, you okay with that? Okay, any discussion, Council?
It says that it's anticipated private donations will be sought to cover the match. Have we been offered, do we have sources lined up, or is this something they're just thinking they're going to pursue?
Randy, you wanna give us an update, perhaps? I hate to put you in front of the camera with that tie, but...
Geez.
Mayor Shalin?
Reminder, she is listed.
Please assess the mayor's appearance tonight when you see him next time. Mark, we do not have an actual list of individuals or corporations that have said they are willing to come forward and donate. However, we do have a list of interested individuals and businesses that said that they would be interested in how they might be able to contribute to this. The actual group that's working on this is the Trail Committee, and they're made up by the private citizens, and they're the ones basically that are making the contacts with the businesses and individuals about their contributions. There has also been indication from one property owner that we need easements to go across their property, actually on the sewer easement, that has indicated that they very much are interested in being a participant in, perhaps in the construction of the trail itself. So I cannot tell you specifically that X person has said that they will donate this or X corporation this, but we do feel that there is enough interest generated by this project that we will be seeing contributions for it. And that's where I think that we definitely want to start, once we have locked in this agreement with DOT.
Okay, so is this something we're gonna be discussing in budget session next year, then?
Yeah, we'll discuss it whenever you want, yeah.
Obviously, it'll be part of the budget discussion, but it'll be going out in March, but it'll be factored into the capital projects at that time. What we do need to do is get the agreement done, this earmark's been sitting out there for a number of years, and we need to get it now and secure those funds is really what the issue is and why we're here tonight.
Randy, didn't that same trail group raise quite a bit of money on the segment out towards Wildcat? That was a significant private...
Corporation, major corporation came through and donated quite a bit of money for that project. We, we see help in making this happen, and considering the fact that you don't even get grants this good, this is beyond a ninety-ten, this is almost a ninety-two-eight, as far as something, this is as good as it gets, so. Any other questions, Council? Thanks, Randy.
You're welcome, Eric.
Thanks, Randy.
Nice tie, by the way. This is a voice vote, Council, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries seven zero. Item M, presented for City Council's consideration, is a request to authorize the issuance of a purchase order for paint striping of the city streets. Two bids were received with a low bid from Wykert Contracting totaling forty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-two cents. It is staff's recommendation that a purchase order be issued to Wykert Contracting in the amount of forty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-two cents. There is fifty thousand dollars budgeted for this project. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Mark, and a second?
Second.
And Tom, any discussion, Council? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries seven zero. It is now time for communications from Councilmembers, beginning with Councilman Lorette.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Nothing? Mark, Phil?
I have nothing at this time, Your Honor.
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Osama?
I have nothing, thanks.
Councilman Bynum, you're looking pretty dapper tonight.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I came from a graduation party just before the council meeting. Graduation party involved two of our distinguished city employees, Andrew Fegman, our city planner, and Darrell Jansen with the fire department. They graduated, spent a lot of time with the leadership Muscatine, and you're gonna be seeing good things happening in Muscatine, coming from this group of people. They're trying to establish a center for business development. They've got some funds, they've got volunteers. We even have Tom, Councilman Tom, is gonna be a part of the program, helping them get diversified in financial situations on how to be an entrepreneur. But they're gonna be located at Loper Hall at the MCC Building. Again, good things happening and coming very soon. Thank you, Your Honor.
Jeanette?
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilman Tom?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor, thank you.
Greg?
Just one quick comment, riverfront cleanup is going well, Public Works, parking wreck, fire department, they've been down there getting things cleaned off, Red Brick Building is open for business, River View Center will be open for the parties that are scheduled out there this weekend, they've done a great job in getting things cleaned off and moved out, no major damage, everything's been moving forward as planned, so appreciate their efforts out there.
Very good. Fran, welcome back to the US of A.
Thank you, I had a glorious time, it's hard to come back. What is this?
Any comments tonight, Fran?
Oh, no.
Okay, and I have no comments, so we'll move on to item fifteen, other business, and we do have some other business. Steve Volka, share with us?
Thank you, Mayor. You'll recall at the last meeting, we brought to City Council an amendment to the diesel emission reduction grant that we received from the state of Iowa, and in difference to Public Works Director Hill, this is a hundred percent grant, not a ninety-two percent, but that aside. We did, we did come to council earlier, we did have a contract, and we were authorized a purchase order to buy the equipment. Subsequent to that, we found that when the bids were received, that we could buy additional equipment for the same amount of money, IDNR encouraged us to do that, and then we also had a couple of new buses come into the fleet that were also affecting this diesel emission reduction program. So that facilitated us coming back to you at the last meeting with an amended contract that has been approved by IDNR and by you to acquire this additional equipment to essentially extend the grant money that was available, expend the grant money that was available to us. Now we're at the point where we need to respectfully request your authorization to issue a purchase order for that equipment. It's a little, it's different from the first one, 'cause we're buying additional equipment, but the cost, unit costs and everything are the same, we're just buying more of it because of the grant money that's available. So we're respectfully requesting your permission to issue purchase orders for that material.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
We'll give that to Osama, and a second, Bob? Any additional discussion, Council? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? And that motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve. Any other business, Council? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, that would be Osama?